He has concerns about the, about Longest End Park. So I'll go ahead and open the floor up to him if that's okay.
Okay.
Where do you form on what policy is on the handicap side?
Do you have that list of the policies in place for the handicap spots?
I do not have it with me.
Okay.
But the policies, as far as I know, it's not advertised as a handicap spot. We know them as the handicap spots, four and five. We had talked about getting a placard where we could paint the handicap thing on it. I haven't had anything since then.
What's the, what's the protocol if, for example, say, obviously I'm not handicapped and I book it for next weekend? And then somebody that is handicapped comes in and wants that same spot?
I will go to the people that are currently there and ask them to move. I can't make them because it's not in the rules.
Okay. Does the work, who has access to the computer system to see if it's booked or not?
Me.
You're the only ones?
Well, I guess Jay.
So you and Jay are the only ones that have access to see if it's booked or not? So I know there's an issue where it was booked. The workers put somebody in that, that spot?
Yes. So it was Tuesday or Wednesday when I wasn't there. They went to one of the maintenance guys and said, can I move to this spot? What I was told is they said, well, let me call Ian and ask him. I never got a phone call. So they just didn't want to bother with it. They said, go ahead, move to that spot, not knowing that it was booked.
Yet the person who is handicapped that booked that spot was asked to move until he threw a fit. That was my brother-in-law. He had booked it two months earlier. Someone was in it when he got there. He was asked to move to another spot. He moved to, or started to move to another spot and then thought, no, I booked this two months in advance. And they are handicapped. So that, that's not going to work. Cove Lake, their handicap spots are open until there are none left. They will book a handicap spot for one night to another individual.
After six o'clock.
After six o'clock.
And they have to roll out the next day in case handicap comes up again. And we know you have that booked for the holiday coming up. So what proof can you show anybody? You don't have to show it to me. But that's handicap people you have on both of those spots?
I have no idea.
Johnny, what is it?
That was a question I was going to ask. If I book online, is four and five not registered as handicap spots?
No.
That's what we got a problem with. That's what we have, so we, that's something that we need to fix, to take care of that.
Okay, that was brought up in the meeting in the spring and it still is not marked.
Okay, that's, my next thing is, is that we need to go ahead and get the, if we have to borrow some, you know, stencil from the city or whatever, and we can mark it as a handicap spot.
Well, I actually like what you mentioned about Cove Lake.
Yeah.
And I didn't know that. We can go in the system and make four, or five, or four and five unavailable to book online. And we can put it on the website. If you are handicapped, these are available, you need to call the office to book it.
That I like, yeah, I like that.
We can do that. I didn't know that they did that.
That, that I like.
Okay.
Do you need that in form of a motion?
Um, yeah, let's go ahead and do that.
And to, to let it be known that they do have to provide proof of them being handicapped when they arrive. Cove Lake does that.
Yeah. No, I mean, yeah, I would agree. Actually, probably, probably best if they, would it be best for them to advise it when they call in?
When they book it, absolutely.
Yeah, when they book it, they're going to have to prove it.
But then when they roll in, they need to have some type of.
A plaque or license plate, something.
They could email or whatever the, the proof that they've got that they're handicapped at that time.
Well, and we're not kicking anybody, but we've been out there camping quite a few times. And we are handicapped. But the handicap sites are taken up by somebody that is not handicapped. And that's, that's a little weird, guys.
Yeah, five and nine are by far the most popular spots. And five is the one that are handicapped.
Four and five are the handicap spots?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we take four and five off the online booking and have a message there. These four and five are handicap only and you'll need to, I guess, do they need to notify you, Ian?
Yes, they will.
Okay. Do you have, do you, they have a phone number that you, that they can call?
They have the office number, there's the park email, there's the Campbell County email. I mean, there are multiple ways to get in touch with them.
Make sure that, you know, that's placed in there and stuff.
And you're going to mark those sites as handicapped?
Yes, sir.
We have to.
They have to. Yeah. Yeah, like I said, hey, that should have been done when we opened the camp site.
Yeah, it should have.
So, uh, I'm, I've lost train of thought. So go back, we got a motion on the floor for four and five to be taking, taken off the list. And a footnote that says camp sites four and five are handicap only. And to reserve these sites, you will have to do email, phone, whatever. And then, not only show proof then, but show proof of when you arrive. Because if you don't, you're not getting the site. And also I'd ask that we get that stenciled and marked as soon as possible.
Would I call the road commission? I mean, who would I call?
Yeah, you could either get that, I'd say the city of LeBottle would probably have a stencil. I'd say Chris could probably get something like that, so, yeah.
Do you want to read that motion?
Yes.
There's a lot there.
Take four and five off online booking and for handicap only. And we need to contact recreation director and be able to provide proof when booking and when booked off.
That's all right. Do I have to say suspicion?
Thank you.
That's good. Now, now.
Oh, oh, let's, let's get the, get the motion then.
Okay, okay, sorry.
I'll say.
Okay. Second by Mr. Kits. Any discussion on that motion? See another roll call?
Dwayne Kits?
Yes.
Dwayne Bear?
Yes.
Johnny Bruce?
Yes.
With three yeses.
All right, now. Um, we, these, these campers need numbers. There's no numbers anywhere. They need the bathroom codes on, on, online. Or we need, we need a phone number where we can get ahold of somebody and get a bathroom code. You don't get the bathroom codes online. We, we actually had to ask other campers to get the, the bathroom codes. And we need an emergency number if something happens. And the camp host out there, that's not marked either. And nobody knows, everybody thinks he's just a camper like the rest of us. That's not marked, there's nobody to get ahold of him. I mean, we've been out there several times and I didn't have no clue he was a camp host. So that needs marked also.
Ian, how is, how is, how are we providing the codes for the bathroom to the campers?
So, a lot of that problem will be rectified once we're in the office down.
Yes.
So what I do if I have somebody that's supposed to come in on Thursday? I have to walk out of the office up on the hill and I walk all the way across the street to see if they're there. And I do that about every thirty, forty-five minutes. I try to go down, I try to meet people. I actually just bought on Amazon business cards that I'm going to print out. And it's going to have my name, the phone number, the email. And on the back of it, it's going to have bathroom codes. And so I will be able to hand those out because I'll be right there.
It's, 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 yeah, you know, and I got to take it for an end on that and the fact that, hey, we did everything backwards. I mean, hey, we built a park out there with camp nests. And we don't have a building out there to actually let people check in. It's up here across the road at the playground. That's, that's crazy in itself. But I, I know you're working on it out there. Boy, you, you probably won't have it done because I know you only spent a couple hours.
Yeah, it's been pretty hot, yeah. But it'll be done in the next couple weeks.
You will?
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll actually have a, a place where you can check in? Not only that, but are you going to try to sell some camping supplies and stuff?
Yeah, we'll have concessions and shirts and water. The mayor brought up maybe having an ice machine. So different things there. And I try to send out an email when they get there because when you book online, you have to provide an email. What I want to start doing is sending the email right away, once they book, because I get the notification. You know, somebody might book in April, it won't show up until July. So I'm going to start sending the email out immediately as opposed to when they arrive.
So the, the Cove Lake will be addressed? My next thing is, since, since the workers don't have access to see if the, if they're booked or not, is there a way of every morning us checking to say, okay, number, number nine is booked today? So we need to put a sign down there, just like reserved and the name, last name of the person that's reserved for? That way if somebody does come to us and say, hey, can we move? They'll know, okay, somebody's supposed to be coming in today for that one.
Yeah, well, that, what happened with that spot five? That's like a one-shot thing. That's pretty much the only time it happened. And I'm pretty sure I know who did that. Most of the time, they'll talk to Mike. And Mike is very good about calling me if he has any questions. So if I need to walk him through it when I'm not there, it's just a couple clicks and he can see that.
Okay.
Yeah. We have a camp host out there. And you're not there, that camp host should be the person providing them with the information that they need and stuff.
So then he's going to have to have access to the office, to the computer, you know, to the booking program?
I don't, I don't mean that. I'm talking about, you know, when they check in, an emergency number, you know, after we, might have a code, you know? They surely got the code to the bathrooms, don't they?
I'm sure they do.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, you know, they help you, help you there. I'm not saying, no, I am definitely not in favor of letting them into your office facility to get on your computer or anything like that.
I could give him a printed out list of what's booked. Like every Monday I can go in and say, here's what's booked this week, what spots, what days.
And if anything changes, you can give them an updated list if anything changes?
Yeah.
I think that would be best.
And like he said earlier, they're not going to know he's the camp host unless there's something.
Well, there's a sign up there.
Yeah, he really, I mean, Cove Lake actually had a sign, camp host, you know, so.
That's what I was going to bring up. Cove Lake had two or three camp hosts, if you remember, just whatever you use in.
I'd like to put it in form of a motion to mark the camp host site. What, what site number is that?
Twenty.
Yeah, twenty.
Twenty.
Any motion, so?
I'll second the motion.
Read that, repeat that motion.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to add signage to the camp host site at site number twenty. And have it identified as the camp host. That way I think it would help out. Like the grammar says, there is, nobody knows.
Yeah.
This camp host is. If they need something, you know, need something, they can go to.
We have a motion by Mr. Kits. We got a second one by Mr. Bruce. Any discussion on that motion? See another roll call?
Dwayne Kits?
Yes.
Dwayne Bear?
Yes.
Johnny Bruce?
Yes.
With three yeses.
Next.
Okay, yeah, here we go. Now this, this is going to be good for you all. Why is the grass three feet tall in the camp sites?
Because I'm the only one who gets to weed eat it. I don't get any help at all.
But they, I mean, somebody has to be accountable for their job, I mean.
I, I can answer that question. I asked the mayor to see about outsourcing that. That way to make sure it got mowed and stuff. And the mayor told me he did not want to do that.
There are five individuals out there, okay? And I don't know their work schedules or anything. But as you know, Mark used to work out at the park and kept it up mostly by himself. It's, it's doable. I mean, I understand you've got other responsibilities with the camp, the camping and stuff. But there are other individuals. And if they're not worried about their job, why should you be worried about it, you know?
Basically for six people out there, man, somebody can cut the three-foot grass.
Mayor, you came in just in time.
Good. I thought it, I thought it was short of six.
We had that discussion about how sorts of the mow to make sure it got done and they're talking about not getting mowed out there.
Yeah, I was going to very say that today, will we, we'll buy a stamp somewhere. We know this, I've placed, I don't know what there is, but I should, but I found that problem. We talked a bit about we need work to go get it done. I told the boys out there, oh my, Johnny, I want that done. But I got to talk to them today, it's going to be that mistake. But, you know, that's part, that's part of the operation. I think she's been there. Can I make comment?
Yes.
When we were discussing all this, if you remember, and, and I got to give, Glenn Day came up with something. Taking that bank with weeds and stuff growing, if we'd took it, wrapped it with big rocks and stuff and everything and filled it in, you wouldn't have to worry about that. All you'd have to do is go through the sprayer and spray it once a year. Now you'd have some, I won't say nice decorative big rocks, but you wouldn't have grass and weed growing all over the place.
And I, I know Mr. Muncie has mentioned a staircase going down there from the campground to, there's a lower dock there.
They absolutely need it.
You are so right. You are so right.
Is that what you feel, man?
How did you know I felt? Well, I'll tell you what, I'm sure you said that I'd be sure of it really great.
Well, we, we've not figured out yet though, Mayor, if it was the bank or that three-foot grass you got turned up there.
Well, it makes it great.
I thought we, I thought we had discussed that you said that you thought you could.
I could form it and, you know, get a concrete truck out there to pour it.
So you think that's something you can work on after the get the office done?
Yeah.
Okay.
You want to try to pour the stems?
No, you want four of them, hit the four of them.
Yeah, he'd like a truck.
Oh, four of them, four of them, okay. That's good.
Probably, you're planning to get some, probably check with a few different people, price to do it.
Daniel?
Probably get a few prices.
Be big enough to be it?
I'll let me bid, but I would, I would like to get a few different prices.
Quote, just one person.
Next?
That's it?
We're done.
You're done?
Yes.
Okay.
Those were simple things.
Hey, that's only a dog too.
That's not simple.
That was more humiliating than anything.
I understand, I know, I do.
Do you care to advise on an update on the bookings and how many weekends a year and the input?
So I didn't, how the system works is it, it's, it's kind of a revenue-based system. I literally have to go and count how many bookings we have. But I do have, so in March, we brought in just under two thousand. April was forty-three hundred, May was ten thousand four hundred, June eighty-eight hundred and July forty-six hundred.
You totaled that, didn't you?
Yeah.
How much is the total total?
Oh, the total total, I didn't, six thousand a month average.
That's pretty nice, so it's good, good head cut for the count.
It's about thirty thousand.
Good, okay, let's go.
Um, an update, um, since it was, since it was something that I was working on. We may have to find somebody else to see about doing the tennis scores. I've reached out to that guy several times and I've knocked her back. I actually reached out to him again today, let him a voice mail, still I've knocked her back. Um, so we, we may have to find somebody else to, uh, maybe see about doing that.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
We're not going to be able to do anything for the rest of the year. We're closing down, when are you going to close the campground down?
It's November fifteenth.
Okay, so. I know, I know you've got several things that you're going to be doing during the winter.
Well, we talked about resurfacing.
Yeah, of course, yeah. Hey, that should be one of the things that we can do in Hackens.
Well, do you think somebody, I mean, usually on, you got the, you got the pavement. But now if you do it right, the tennis side is, is an epoxy. And it's different than redoing the, the actual surface.
There, there's companies that do that, Dwayne just said. I have, we have the boroughs looking into March, trying to reach out and see if they can find someone else.
I mean, I, I, listen, I'm not saying you can't do it by no means, but like I, I'd like for a professional to do that.
Be good enough to do it.
Yeah, I mean, no disrespect to him.
No, I, I know that. But he's not the only one after.
They're all.
The rest of them.
I'm just telling you, you know?
Ian, you got anything else for us?
Um, basketball nets, is that something that Jay would take care of?
Sure, yes, we can get that. Just put, just put it down.
Yeah, okay. Uh, no, it's busy, this building's going to turn out great. I can't thank you guys enough again for it.
We can't thank you enough, buddy, for actually going in and doing the work on the inside to get, to get it set up.
I'm anxious to see it finished.
I'm anxious to get the air conditioning.
Every time I've been out there, it's been a little hot, hasn't it?
Yeah.
More.
Um, something I was thinking about, and it would be for probably next year. But doing nights in the park where we could have different vendors, food vendors, stuff like that. But specifically for Fourth of July, Halloween, Christmas. I think those, the movie nights, I, I think it's a waste, to be honest. We have, we played Goonies on Saturday. It was me, my wife and Jay. So, I mean, you're spending a lot of money for it. But I think the nights in the parks, get people out there, get vendors out there, get different organizations out there. I think it would be a good idea.
You guys remember back at Cove Lake, the Boy Scouts did it? And they did the, the little lanterns and stuff and everything that they set up along the trail?
Christmas.
Was it Christmas?
Christmas in the park, yeah.
Yeah, that's right. I mean.
It's fantastic. And we got a long walkway after we could do.
I should say, because Cove Lake's going to be shut down, guys, for several more months. So, hey, this is an opportunity for us to really push what we have.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I think that'd be a good idea.
The only thing I would have a question there is our policy with the vendors. We have a policy in place, you know, they're, they're supposed to pay so much to set up. So that's something we may have to address if we decide to do it. You know, it's a little different if we're inviting them as opposed to somebody using the park for vendors. So that might be something we need to address.
If we have, if they were making money, we couldn't have them like, well, if we invite them, we could have, like they do downtown, a faller that have two truck knives.
I don't know if we got enough.
They, when they come around, they, they travel one thing.
How many does the city have?
A faller has the least they eat, or ten. But they go and wrap their little faller on hews and quinceaux or something. I mean, that's a possibility. Yeah. I guess another thing that I could sing or something.
I'll pass.
What's that?
He said he could sing or something, so I'll pass.
That's a good point.
The issues that you all have, other than that, what do you think about the campground?
Love it.
Yeah, we love the campground.
We've always liked that park, you know?
Yeah, very nice.
Yeah, it, you've done a really good job. And is there a reason why it closes it in October? I, I don't imagine that there are a lot of people after October, but I just wondered.
I mean, realistically, it could be open year-round. There's, there's no reason it can't. I mean, I'm there year-round, so.
Yeah, I'm just curious.
The only issues that we have though is it's been water lines freezing.
And they're so contained.
And at, and at that point, then, hey, it becomes, since we have asphalt and stuff and everything to get into the water line, they're going to be digging up the asphalt. Get in some of that, so that would be an issue there. I'm just glad you all are enjoying it.
We are, you know, we always have, you know?
Our, our trees.
There's one sitting there until it's hot degree weather, so they water it two times a day.
I was going to say, are you watering them?
Yeah, we're a bit watered.
Are you putting trees out?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, very nice.
Kind of block people from looking at you when they drive by. Have a little ground cover down there in the middle, like. We'd fear find out where the water lines are and all that stuff. Guy come out there and put little flags everywhere. Of course, we couldn't afford that many trees, he probably does other flags. So I just bought what we could and whatever, it'll, it'll be nice.
What else you got, Ian?
That's about it.
Is it, Mayor, you got anything?
I do, a few things. Hell, here's something I, I don't know about. You got, you camp, Johnny, so this is a good question I need to bring out. Somebody had called me and said they camp, I guess, self-contained somewhere. And then they go to Cove Lake to dump. And Cove Lake's not doing that anymore. Do we, I mean, I know the sewer reserve, then, I mean, they can come in ten minutes to dump, I guess.
Does Cove Lake charge them to dump?
Yes, twenty-five dollars. That's what I'm told. I had a gentleman ask us, an older gentleman called me and he said, I do this one, I camp one. And he said, I go out fishing, so I'm away from a place like that. I've been dumping in Cove Lake. He said, I'd be glad if the county to do that. And he said, I see you have empty spots, you know, that I could slip in there and be gone in twenty minutes. But is that feasible, Johnny, since you camp, I don't know?
Yeah, I mean, hey, listen, most of the people, you know, that are traveling up and down the road and stuff, they're self-contained anyway. So if they, if you pull over to rest area now, before you pull out, they've got a place where you can actually dump. So, yeah, or, listen, we could put one in. It'd be something that could, you know, be added on and stuff. And that way we wouldn't even be taking up a slot.
Well, it's rare. It's basically Memorial Day, July fourth, and Labor Day when it's full. Other than that, we're never full. I mean, I have twelve spots, but there's still eight open.
How possible we don't live on holidays? So that will be, I mean, I don't know because I don't camp, that's why I brought them.
I can say that.
We could use twenty-five dollars or something, just if everybody's okay with it.
Yeah, because they don't want to be driving up and down the road for stuff.
We probably need to make a motion to put down the policy that where you're allowed to get, what the price of the. Which I, I would think, I mean, I'd rather dump this, dump it somewhere like that than on the side of the road or something.
All we got is open a van.
Cove Lake's not there.
I'll make a motion that we start the process of looking to see, you know, that we can do, dump, you know, you can dump your sewer tanks and everything out there at twenty-five dollars.
Per tank, or is it per tank, or how is it?
Yeah, just they.
Per dump.
Per dump, yeah, because. Is that good?
We just think they added to the policy.
And that's just for the people that's not camping there, right?
Right, that's all, you know, people can't, don't play.
Okay, I'll say.
Any discussion on that? Got a motion by Mr. Bruce, same by Mr. Kits. Roll call.
Dwayne Kits?
Yes.
Dwayne Bear?
Yes.
Johnny Bruce?
Yes.
With three yeses.
Saying that this passes the committee. Mayor, what else you got?
Uh, the Boy Scouts are going to have the White Higman, Higman White area campground out there. An area to do their recreation. So I was at Burgess and I noticed they have a sign made by, maybe the three by six or something, real nice. I like the color of it. And their sign, it will be on probably two panels, just with the little Higman White. And I thought that was pretty, I thought it looked good. We're talking about, you know, we, we passed, we didn't, the commission passed a long time ago that we would put a sign on that building out there, EMS build for pot milk.
Yes.
Well, Kath, I was looking into the.
Well, Kath, I was looking into that price and those things, and I remember she came in and said, "This is just unbelievably cost."
Yeah, those were brass that she was looking at.
She was looking at brass or something, well, those brass turned out to be like, I just sent the girls, I said, "We gotta get that done," I said, "It's not been done," I told my girls, "Look into it." They came back at twelve, fifteen hundred dollars for a plaque, and I thought, well, yeah, it really don't look good on metal build anyway. So, I went to Burgess and I said, you know, well, if we put a sign, of course, it'll be big. It'll be said two by four, put up on the building, Edgar Pop Miller EMS building of the county seal.
I know it's not.
I mean, this will be on metal.
Right.
Thick, and they'll screw it up, and if it wears any, or say, five years it lasts and starts to fade, they can just take it back to Burgess, put a new cover on for twenty bucks. And this is only about forty dollars on metal. But it's like, say, it'll be that big. So, we didn't say in the commission meeting that it was gonna be brass or whatever, or bronze. So, I kinda like, would like to match those with the Boy Scout signs.
Okay.
Has that sort of pale background as wrote. Also, I noticed there's no sign, I mean, there's one that says Longish Young Park. He and Pop Miller were the ones that kind of built this idea, and there's really not one there that says anything about him. So, I had them make this, we could change any of this, see if I want to. Just to let them know, this park is named for Longish Young, who spent many hours working to make this park red. And I thought maybe we could put this where we got the sign that says Longish Young Park. It'll be the same size as that, and they could put it under that sign on the poles or something. So, the category.
We don't, we don't need a motion to re-improve that sign.
No, no, we can put it up anyway, but I wonder if I see it. Burgess, I thought the color scheme was really good. You'd be able to read this one a lot better than a metal bronze plaque.
Right.
I think, so, okay, I'll win, that's okay, I'll win. Another thing we're working on is, Missy had the chamber, she was doing a Zoom with the tourist development outreach project coordinated with State Tennessee Park Tourism. And she said, "There is a grant vote, what I can apply for, it has to be done." So, there is a grant. And I, these guys, we've already talked about this, I didn't read a little more on it. But basically, from our quick, a quick land setting, has to be a government entity, up to a hundred thousand. I don't expect everybody to get a hundred thousand, but I mean, it would do probably fifty thousand. It does something, probably. Approximately, there will be twenty-five, thirty grants awarded, depending on the availability of funds, we can get them next month. I'm gonna try this, I'm willing to try. Property must be leased on, at, on property or property leased by that from TVA or the US Army Corps of Engineers, so it fits our category. It has a match, but it is minimal. I find that, it's about, I think it's ten percent.
What can it be used for?
It can be used for, this is branded, that's a claim. The tourist, since tourism is the largest, one of the largest industry, most important economic drivers in Tennessee, the purpose of this grant is to support tourist and development projects by eligible grantees to allow for the creation or expansion of physical attractions, facilities, or events that are available and open to the public that improve the appeal of the destination for tourists and enhance the tourist's experience and are primarily promoted to our tourists. So, it's basically anything that you put out there that would be good for the tourists. And I was, you know, think, I kinda was thinking about splash paint. I don't know, that may be out of our reach.
I thought as it's being, be correct.
It would be wonderful, this kind of, but I don't know if it's possible, but I would like to look into that or a playground, 'cause we don't have anything for older children that's good for, we got the small swings, we need something for little bigger kids. Something along that line, or if anybody's got a better idea, I'm all ears. Anything, any thoughts?
Yeah, my first thought was, my first thought was playground.
Burn?
Playground, that was my first thought, when we first...
Yeah, 'cause it's really limited what you got out there.
It is, it's for four-year-olds and under.
Right, either one of them we do, though, will be an attraction that will bring tourists. So, I think that would pass muster, but it's gonna take some work to find that. Anybody has any ideas on this, I'll present it to the commission in workshop. If you think, I mean, this, I'd have to have permission to plot, correct?
Yes.
If it doesn't matter, we can, I think we'll find ten percent for that, so... That'll go to everybody. I'll present it to the commission. Okay.
Ready, Ian?
Yeah. I'm full of it. So, closing, we're figuring on closing October out on that side. We need to jump on in October, November. We need to bid concrete for the other pavement and probably bids and tons. And I don't know, is that in the capital budget? Hold that, I need to talk to you.
We already appropriated the funds, I thought we already appropriated the funds for it.
Okay, maybe I'll see.
What was it, for the other...
Pavement.
Did we not already appropriate the funds?
Those funds are already...
They're ready, okay. Okay, so I think we need to take bids or at least get started on that in October. Or probably get a month ahead, probably, but probably start September slow as good as I can. And maybe we can get them in for winter. That's all I have.
Bill, you got anything?
I see, no, I think everything's been covered, but I appreciate Ian's work on the building there. That'd be nice, once we get that down there. Been hot, bearing you a couple days there, so appreciate everything, and I guess everything's good.
Good?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Have a lovely break, and thank you, Mr. Marlowe. Not, not yet. Um, Mr. Bruce?
Thank you all for coming. Like I said, hey...
Thanks for listening.
Well, the thing about it is, these are things that we can fix, that should have been fixed. I mean, this young man right here works his butt off out there, you know, and like you said, he's by himself, he's trying to get things accomplished, and I can't compliment him enough, you know, on what he does and stuff. But there again, if you guys don't see it, let us know, we can get ahead. It can never be done.
Thank you very much.
And Ian, but like I said, hey, man, I'm dropping out there every now and then and talking with you, I appreciate the work you're doing. And I think that you take pride in that park out there, and that's what we need. Thank you.
Mr. Marlowe? I don't have anything pressing as far as it goes. Something I would like, that's to keep in mind and make sure it gets done, is in the fall, we need to pressure wash over the baseball field, like the, the... Dugout. The dugouts. Yeah, the dugouts and stuff, we talked about doing that before. Pretty hot right now, so I understand, I've done it right now, but since it's melted, I'd like to make sure that gets done.
I'm talking to Sherers about that, bringing the hawksie out there.
Yeah. Are they still using the silver or something? No.
Baseball, they're all... Shoot, you've done quite a bit.
Well, I don't want them to get behind a mow, you know, and obviously they have, so, I mean, I'd like to get that done. And then when things start slowing down, you know, are they letting the baseball field get out of hand with grass in the infield and stuff like that?
Yeah.
That needs to be addressed.
Bless you.
I thought it was okay, I didn't like it.
There's quite a bit of grass in the field. What also needs to be addressed in the fall or the winter is dirt. I mean, there's just a huge divot, right between first and second base.
Yes, yeah, there's a place of water there.
Speaking of dirt, I'm sorry, did Mike ever move those dirt piles?
He started?
He worked on it.
He's working?
About third of it.
Yeah.
Scared him out. I sort of say, I have an eight max, but third.
Yeah, I don't want that baseball field to get hanging with grass in the infield, that just makes it rough during the, you know, when it's time to start playing again. We do need, we do need to do something with that infield, though, 'cause, you know, right now, if it rains, you know, most of your fields, you wanna make it where the rain flows off, off the baseball field. I heard it flows off the baseball field.
Glenn, what is that red stuff out there? Is that crushed brick, it's sand, it looks real red.
No, out there, there's no crushed brick.
It's just dirt?
Crushed brick would be nice, it'd be really nice, it's expensive, though.
Whatever that red is, that's red clay, or whatever it is, I notice getting that dugout sticks every time.
Yeah.
We got a good supply of chert out there. Chert, rock and dirt.
Good. But, yeah, we can get that, make sure the infield will be in current weight with it, with the grass. I really don't have, really don't have anything, yes. It needs to be addressed as far as it goes. Oh, I do, I do have one more thing. We talked about last year and still doesn't get done, that area where we had the water leak next to the bathrooms over by the launch ramp, is in the middle of parking lot, right there.
Oh, putting rock in it, I had, I bought rock for that, we get near enough.
Okay.
I didn't know what rock.
Okay.
Could be.
Yeah, I sleep the rock.
That's about eight hundred dollars, I saw that for rock at all. So, probably need to do an eight hundred dollar, we need eight hundred dollars.
Other than that, I think that's all I've got. Anybody else think anything else that might need to be addressed? Zach, just so you know, 'cause I know you've been on it quite a bit, too, I told them, we're gonna figure something else out on the tennis courts. I've reached out to that guy several times, not responded to me. I even let him voicemail this morning earlier today, and I knocked her back from dinner, so I need to find somebody else to, to do it.
I find out who Knox County uses, they got so many of them, they have to have somebody else, so...
But Ian, if nobody has anything else, I'll...
Mr. John?